I guess we're live. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Lambert and I'm the chairman of the board. And welcome to the July 10th, 2024 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. If we can rise and read the pledge of allegiance. Just a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If there's any comments from the audience, please come up, give your name, and speak into the mic. I'll introduce members here at the board. To my left is township manager Steve Brown and solicitor Bernadette Kearney. And on my right is vice chairman supervisor Rich Orlo and supervisor Peter Fixler. Moving on with board briefings. Our executive sessions were held on July 2nd at 11:15 to discuss legal, personal, and real estate issues, as well as on July 10th of this year at 4:30, also to discuss real estate personnel and legal matters. We'll start off with updates on our grant application and funding sources from Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's one new application which I'll hold off on discussing because it's further down on the agenda, but I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to just update the board and the public on where we stand on our total grants secured. So through this month, the township's secured a total of $11,773,713 total from approximately 30 grant funding sources, which is significant.
That's great. Good job by everybody on that. And next, Parks and Rec update from Larry, who's on our Zoom call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Rec, not many huge updates as far as last time is concerned. Summer camp is taking full priority as it's in full swing right now. Charlestown Elementary, about 140 kids have been enrolled and we see about 130 coming on a daily basis. And it's our biggest camp yet and we've had the most council we've ever hired. Next week, we have our summer concert series that is with Dylan Zangwill and Crosstown Traffic. And we have our one in August, which happens to be the same day as our board meeting that month. And that is with Cars Tribute Band, My Best Friend's Girl. And finally, at the end of summer, on August 30th, we have our summer movie night, which will be featuring Gung Fu Panda IV. And I'm working to establish some fall programming and possibly an East Whiteland Community Day. But those are still very much works in progress and I will update the board as soon as more information is available.
Larry, next Wednesday's concert series, the type of music, is that funk and soul?
No, that was last month's. Next month's concert series, Crosstown Traffic is a jam and reminiscent of like Jimi Hendrix's X-type 70s, 60s vibe. And Dylan Zangwill, I believe, is more of an acoustic soul opener. So the real kind of blues funk was last month's concert.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Moving on, we've got discussion pertaining to emergency management plan.
That's a dated agenda. We'll do that next month.
I only have four here, so I guessed wrong which one it was. Steve, if you could give us an update on the Spring Ridge and Balderson agreement of sale.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Yeah, in the, I'll say, continued good news department, these properties are located on Phoenixville Pike. They're located across from the Great Valley High School and Middle School. And they are roughly 140 acres, represent almost all wooded hillside primarily in East Whiteland Township, some in Charlestown Township. And many people have worked many years to get these properties under agreement. And thank you to the efforts of Bernadette Kearney and Catherine Ricardo in this room. There's actually too many people to mention, but the properties are now under agreements of sale. There's still a lot of work to be done. These properties, for those who aren't familiar with them, are associated with Superfund Site, the Malvern TCE site. So the EPA has been involved, the National Park Service has been involved, the Department of Justice has been involved, the responsible parties have been involved, and everyone has attorneys. So it's been taken, yeah, well, yes, what's wrong with that? Nothing really, but there's lots of talking that's been going on for years and lots of work and more work to come. But anyway, these properties, if we can actually get them to the settlement table, which I'm confident that we will, will be a tremendous asset to the township in that there's nothing like them in our township. Again, to have 140 acres of wooded hillside with old, I guess they're logging roads on the property, you basically have ready-made network of, an extensive ready-made network of trails that will become available to the community. So it's very exciting. And again, I do want to publicly thank Bernadette and Catherine for all their hard work to bring it to this point.
Steve, the board want to thank everyone involved with it as well. I know it's been a long process, but thank you. Well worth it. Moving on to E. Zach, I know we had a outreach program yesterday. If you can kind of give us a recap and update on that.
Yeah, so yesterday, we invited some folks from our, the office community, both owners and operators within the Great Valley Corporate Center. We had a 10 o'clock session with that group and a 2 o'clock session with what I'll call sort of the small business or commercial corridor folks along Route 30, some help from the outreach through the Great Valley Owners Association and through the East Whiteland Business Partnerships. We appreciate their help getting the word out. But saying, we'll work on a, more of a summary that kind of summarizes some of the more salient points, I guess, post those on our website. But one of the, some of the high-level themes out of the morning session in particular were, which is no surprise to anybody, that the return to office, the RTO, has been slow going, right? People are still back in more like three days a week than five days a week. Mondays and Fridays are especially slow. It's easy to get a parking spot, but you know, when, in the middle of the week, things are much more active. And they, that group felt like that probably is more like the new normal. We don't anticipate, they don't anticipate a real return to what we were used to seeing with five days a week of people in the office full-time, which has an impact, obviously, on our commercial stakeholders as well, the people in restaurants and services and things like that. So this may be the new normal. Things may, you know, return over time, but not like they used to be, seems to be the consensus. There's been a flight to quality, which is something we've heard, you know, on repeat, I would say, the newer, nicer buildings, the ones that are highly amenitized, the ones that are in communities with things to do, and I would say trails, recreation, entertainment, things like that. One of the things that's becoming more and more of a resounding sentiment is the real lack of affordable housing, not just for, you know, the group of folks that we normally think of needing something that's more affordable, more attainable, but even what we would consider good-paying jobs. It's becoming harder and harder for people to find a place that's near their work. They don't want to drive, which again, who does? But it's, none of this is real surprising, but just the reinforcement of some of these themes we've been hearing and in that setting, I think was pretty impactful. It's becoming a real workforce issue, not just for the people who need to go there, but attracting new businesses to take these office spaces that are becoming, you know, functionally obsolete in a lot of ways. They don't lend well to renovation. The floor plates and the need for HVAC upgrades, things like that, things that we would normally not pay super close attention to really complicate getting people back into the office and getting these buildings reused. Residential, just in general, in and around the Corporate Center was a resounding theme as well. We know that, you know, we're going to have to take all the information that we get from these stakeholders and kind of compare it against what we hear from the rest of the community. But definitely some themes began to emerge and things that, you know, not all good news either. Where there's real concerns over rising vacancies and what that may mean for reassessments and what that means for the tax base, not only for the township, but for the school district as well. So again, not all gloom and doom. There were some positive notes that came out of it and we'll try to focus on those as well. But something we're really going to have to get our hands around here as this process moves forward, so.
Right. Like to thank all the business leaders that came to the meeting. I was in the afternoon one. There were some good discussions. So, and I guess we may potentially have another one later in the summer or early in the fall.
Yeah, I think we have a couple more meetings planned, maybe not quite in that same format, but we also want to meet people where they're at. So if the Business Partnership, for example, or other groups are, you know, having meetings, get-togethers, we're happy to attend and kind of provide updates and give our insights and gather feedback. So try to find a opportunity to do that as the process plays out.
Was there noted, was it 4 million square feet of empty spaces?
Well, 4 million roughly total of space. I didn't hear a specific number on the vacancy, but you know, we're hearing those like 20% ranges are, we're coming to it and we may go beyond that, which is a pretty big deal. That's, that's a bad.
20%, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Zach, for organizing. Any question, Peter? Anything?
Yeah, no.
Moving on to board motion and resolutions. Chief, I guess we've got a discussion about the new police car fit cost.
Yeah, it's pretty basic, $15,709.54 for the outfit. It's an unmarked car, so it actually is cheaper than a marked car. Costs are going up rapidly for these upfits. There's not a lot we can do about it, other than try to be smart about how we're buying and try to use parts that we can switch from one car to another. Most of the cars we have are between, we keep for four to five years. So seemingly, the, some of the parts for the upfits should be able to be taken out and reused. But in their infinite wisdom, the car dealerships are, they change the cars just enough that we have to throw away like a $4,000 cage in the car. So we try, we try to chase it down and, but that's where it comes down to.
Can that go on municipal bid?
Well, they can, but nobody wants them for the same purpose. So once they're, once, you know, everybody's doing the same thing, so you're trying to sell something that nobody else wants either. You may find a small department somewhere that keeps guard for six years, but theoretically, they would have already had that car.
And these specs, they don't include the laptop that goes from car to car.
Oh, no, that, that's, that doesn't really even include it. That comes from the county, so I think we just pay to have it moved from one to the other. And most of that stuff is reused over and over. Some of the other things are the lights, the sirens, the smart boxes, which are computer boxes, and just all the electricity and to run it and the voltage regulators and it's And then cameras too, I should have added, you know, now, now we put three cameras in every car, so that gets expensive.
Chris, just one side note, this is an unmarked car, so it doesn't impact this, but in subsequent cars, I guess we should have a conversation or you should consider the fact that we're doing the rebranding of the township logo. So we should kind of talk about what impact that would have on the police cars or not, which we can discuss.
We did talk, I talked, you know, Steve said that we would talk about it, but yeah, you're right. It's a pretty long conversation, so we should probably have it.
Yep. Okay. Fair enough. So, Peter, would you like to make a motion on 3A?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the police outfit for the new car, the new unmarked car for $15,709.54.
With second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
This is what I'm curious to hear about.
Why?
I want to hear first.
Chris, you're still up on the, the new technology of dronage.
So the dronage, we've been playing around with for a couple of years, but the more I see incidents on TV and, you know, the importance of drones and how they can keep police officers and victims and citizens either away from a crime scene or you, I mean, there are just a million purposes. You know, you have silver alerts, you know, an elderly person is missing, we can throw them out. If there's a child missing, there's just a million reasons why now, as well as for community events, you know, if you're having a community night out or, you know, concerts, we can get pictures overhead and, and it's just gotten to the point where they're, they're very affordable, they're very helpful, and I think it's a tool that, that we should be able to have at this point. And it would be for every department here, so I'm going to charge them rent for it. So they don't know that yet, but, so, but seriously, like everyone will be able to use it, you know, the fire department, you know, codes, as well as Public Works for anytime, you know, if you have to get somewhere, if you have to go up and look in a woods that you can't really get to, or you would have to crawl through poison ivy and everything, just a lot of uses for it.
Thanks.
We have, we have two people going to school.
That was my question.
That was the rush to get it in on today's meeting because the school is next week. So it's going to be in two different, it's a three-day school. We had two officers that are interested. They'll go to the school and once they get out of there, they'll be eligible to apply for a pilot's license to fly these. So we'll, we'll do that and then we'll, we'll add on things as it goes along to be able to get, we want to be able to take night pictures immediately. So that's a big thing to have infrared ability.
We have our drone yet?
No.
I didn't think so, yeah.
Some of the reason is because at the school, they're going to tell us like what we need, what we don't need, and how we can start out and, and get better from there.
And the idea of the price range ultimately? It can't be cheap with infrared.
We're hoping to keep it under like $10,000, which is not much because, you know, a few years ago, they were like 40, 50,000 for, for something like we're looking at.
Would it make any sense to have someone else sit in on the training from another department? Just, I know they're not going to be utilizing it initially, but to help pre-train them?
This is a police training, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So I think that's the purpose.
All right.
We were kicking around having somebody from the Parks Department, but it's, it has a lot to do with the police training.
All right. All right. Yes, if you'd like to make a motion.
I would love to make a motion to send to our finest to a drone usage training seminar.
And with second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Catherine, can you give us an update on our $3 million resolution?
Yeah. So this, this resolution is for a CFA multimodal transportation fund grant application for Route 30 traffic improvements. And just as by way of reminder, because this is something that we've applied for over the last few years. So our total in hand for Route 30 improvements right now for grant funding is $5 million roughly. We have a $3.5 million earmark request with the federal government out right now that we're waiting for a response on. So this application is for up to $3 million as well, which could be used for two different ways. Should the earmark request be unsuccessful, this could become those matching funds to close that gap for the $3 million. Or if you remember during budget season last year, we had trimmed down this project from the original scope, which was a little over 10 million. Now we're right around 8.5 million total for this project. And this would allow us to add back in some additional elements of that project that we had trimmed when we looked at that revised scope. So it would offer us that flexibility. So this application will be written fairly, with a, with a very wide scope, I should say, so it allows us some flexibility to hone in on it as we move forward.
The project you referred to is the intersection of 352 and 30, right?
This would not be specific to that intersection, this one.
But that's the project that is the $8 million project?
No, that's the entirety of the corridor, targeting the intersections in addition to 30 and 352.
The entirety of the corridor, meaning the entire two-lane portion of Route 30?
The entire revised scope.
Right.
Which includes, yes, revised scope, which included Route 30, which included 30 and 352, and then the selected intersections, and then there were some other ancillary improvements.
Right. It's not the widening of the entire Route 30.
It's not, no.
Okay, I don't think so. All right.
Now, the bulk of it is between 352 and 30 and Church Road. That's the bulk, that's the bulk of it.
Yep, and Plainbrook.
Yeah, right. Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Rich?
Sure. Motion to approve Resolution 282024 for the Commonwealth Finance Agency Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Application for Route 30 Traffic Improvements.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. I will turn over this portion of the meeting to Bernadette Kearney for a public hearing.
Just let me know when you're ready. Ready. I'm going to open the public hearing this and read the legal notice for tonight's hearing. Notice is hereby given that on July 10th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the East Whiteland Township Municipal Building, the Board of Supervisors shall hold a public hearing on and immediately thereafter, at the public meeting, will consider adoption of the following ordinance. The ordinance title is an ordinance amending the East Whiteland Township Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 200, to amend Section 200-39, CGO Corporate Gateway Overlay District, and to amend Section 200-14, terms defined to add a definition for mixed use, and to amend Section 200-70, required parking for specific uses, to add a parking requirement for self-service storage facility. The ordinance amends the zoning ordinance to amend Section 200-39, CGO Corporate Gateway Overlay District, to include additional permitted uses, revised development standards, architectural standards, and submission requirements. Two, to amend Section 200-14, terms defined to add a definition for mixed use, and three, to amend Section 200-70, required parking for specific uses, to add a parking requirement for self-storage facility. The ordinance also includes repealer, revision, severability, effective, effective date, and failure to enforce not a waiver section. Going to mark a series of exhibits for this hearing. B1 is the June 7th, 2024 filing with the Chester County Planning Commission. B2 is the June 7th, 2024 email to the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission. Both of those have the attached ordinance. B3 is the June 19th, 2024 email and letter to the Daily Local News with the legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4 is the June 19th, 2024 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5 is the July 3rd, 2024 Chester, Chester County Planning Commission Review Letter. B6 is the proof of publication, and B7 is the proposed ordinance. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Barner, who may be able to explain a little bit more. I will say in your exhibit package, as part of the review by the planning commission, we sent them not only the proposed ordinance, but a copy of what was a comparison, basically, of what we were changing from the ordinance as it is today to what is being proposed. So that is also included in your package. If you needed to see what those changes are, you can see what is being added in red and taken out as crossed out.
Thank you. So not a whole lot to add to that. I think Bernadette gave a good overview from the legal description and the ordinance itself. The real focus of this, aside from adjusting some of the floor area ratios to ensure like sort of a different and more balanced mix of uses in some ways, we've focused on the architectural standards, like she said, some of the submission requirements. And the idea here really is to get more information upfront during the conditional use process, more control, I'll call it for lack of a better word, on the architecture of the building that will be determined during the conditional use process. And really just trying to make sure we understand the look and the feel of the building as it's coming through the process, whereas the, the previous version of the code really was, was pretty bare bones in terms of the restrictions or requirements. So not much to add to that. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Yeah, I get pretty much incorporated a lot of things that we talked about. Looks pretty thorough. There's a lot of red marks on there, so.
And it was reviewed, I think, at least twice by the planning commission, if not...
Yeah, I meant to, I think it was, it may have been three times even. It's been reviewed a couple of times with the planning commission and there's been at least one or two visits here to the board. Some of this was, you know, driven in part by some challenges that some of the property owners in this district have had with leasing the existing office buildings. So we felt that with this being, you know, the moniker is the corporate gateway overlay, right? And so we want to make sure that the gateway to our community is welcoming, inviting, and not, you know, an empty building. So I think this is a good step towards making sure that the Corporate Center and some of our office areas are, you know, on their way towards where we're being revitalized and making sure that we're, we're set up for the future.
This is part and partial to this. I just wanted to ask folks, the landscaping behind or between 202 and where this project's going to be, is it going to be, remain kind of in a wooded section? I know the Ben Dots easement, you can't touch, but will there, will there contain a lot of the trees to prevent that visual, both for your residents as well as for anyone driving down 202 to the project? Sure. Thanks.
Yes, and just identify yourself.
Sure. Andrew Hicks. So this contemplated renovation project, redevelopment project would take place within the current asphalt that exists at the property. So nothing outside of what's currently asphalt would be touched.
And, and Mr. Hicks, can you just identify what property you're speaking about in case someone?
52 East Swedesford Road.
Thank you.
Okay. Just curious on that more than anything. Okay. That's my only question.
Oh, wait, we should ask Donna if there's any.
Donna, any question for the public?
No, there's no questions.
And then if we're, if you guys don't have any, I'll close the public hearing and we'll go back to the public meeting. Anyone else in the audience?
I have none.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and go back to the public meeting and then I will ask for that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Without seeing any questions from the audience or online, Peter, Rich, any other questions you've got?
None.
None. No, it was very well thought out and comprehensively done, yeah.
Peter, would you like to make a? Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to brew, to, excuse me, to approve the zoning text amendment related to Section 200-39 for the corporate gateway overlay. Uh, Section 200-14? Now, I don't know if, do I need to include that, Bernadette?
Yeah.
And Section?
200.
270.
Yes.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
John Neal, if you can come up regarding motion to award and advertise.
Uh, we are asking for the approval to advertise a 2011 Ford F-550 dump truck on Municipal. Little past its due date. We just got the replacement, so.
It's nothing like fine wine, is it?
Yeah, no. They get worse.
Yeah, um, don't see any issues here.
No issues here.
Peter, you want to?
Absolutely.
Make another motion?
Like to make a motion to approve to advertise to sell a 2011 Ford F-550 dump truck.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll move on to 5B with Catherine and the use occupancy certificate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposed ordinance number 361 to establish criteria to implement a use and occupancy certificate requirement for the sale and lease of all buildings in the township. Um, so this ordinance sets forth definitions, um, application requirements, inspection compliance, and reinspection requirements. Um, this is consistent with the township's long-established practice of already doing these inspections, but, um, the policy should be in place via this ordinance. So this would be, um, to authorize advertisement of a public hearing at the August meeting.
Donna, any questions in the public, public questions here? Board members?
Uh, no, none.
I have, I have none.
We've been doing this for a while, so this codifies it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement for ordinance 3612024 for use and occupancy certificate requirements.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes 30. Moving on to Section 6 for planning and development. And I will turn over to Zach Barner as he gets his notes queued up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the, uh, final plan application for the Green Fig Data Center, as we call it, um, off Swedesford Road. The applicant received preliminary approval at the June meeting, and sort of simultaneous to that process playing out, had submitted their final plan, which has been reviewed by our consultants. There's a couple of, uh, items you'll see in the review letters, um, what I would consider mostly cleanup at this juncture. In primarily the Arrow letter related to stormwater and a few, I'll say administrative items, and a couple of items in the McMahon letter. Uh, I don't feel that those are major issues at this point. Uh, things could be handled as the process proceeds. There'll be a another round of cleanup before the plan's recorded or anything like that. Um, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer as, as I'm able. I know the applicant team is here, and I, and I know Ed from Arrow is also here as well. If there's any questions on the, I'll say the civil engineering side of things.
I do have a couple questions I would like to touch base with, and just, just to remind, um, audience members, if you've got a response, to come up to the mic at, at, at that time. Um, Zach, one of the questions I had, we had talked about, um, different types of conditions pertaining to façades or glass. Um, has that, that condition is not officially in the, uh, final version here, is it?
So in the preliminary approval resolution, there was not a condition specific to providing or reviewing or, um, you know, board approval being required for the architecture of the buildings. Um, the, the motion tonight, should the board be so inclined, would be to draft an approval resolution for the following month. So I don't know what, uh, what specifically your, your question is, but, um, I know, I do believe the applicant has some of their architectural renderings, and I, I received some pictures earlier from the applicant, uh, with respect to a, a similar location elsewhere.
Yeah. I guess more specifically, I, I thought there was going to be something in, in writing that was going to be attached to, to the, to the, uh, um, application to kind of, so we've all are understanding what, what we're talking about. Charlie here?
If it's, yeah, go ahead.
I'm Charlie Ledain, and I am, uh, the managing partner. Uh, we have some of the renderings. We have customers that are very interested. We have, we're, they're tripping over us right now. And these people have, some of them have their own, uh, their, their own look, their own branding. And we have to, we're trying to accommodate that. We understand that the thing that you're most interested in is not having large white boxes out there, and we understand that. We've gone to great lengths with the landscaping so that people can't see it. And we're working on that. Uh, the, one of the other 1547 data centers up in Orangeburg, New York. And if you could help us with that, we have some artist renderings, but the artist renderings that we had done were mostly done to show the effect of putting the landscaping around and limiting the visuals from that. But we can show you what one of the other, uh, data centers looks like. There are some shots of that if you could. I sent some pictures over, uh, on these. And, and these are basically, um, windows, uh, tan building, uh, black trim. Um, this is another, this is one of the, uh, entryways into the building. So you have the black strip, the black, um, glass. Uh, you got a couple more pictures there. There's another, uh, that's just a, a utility part of the building. That's just a side of the building. It, they're, they're relatively nondescript. And it, I mean, it looks like an office building.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, we can show you the, we'd be happy to show you the, uh, renderings. Now, this happens to be the rendering that Rich Orlo is going to see on his way to work in the morning. Alright, so this is coming out of, there you go. You can see the beautiful rail here on the bicycle path that I already had made for you. Alright. So. Taking your beer. So that's the direction.
Charlie, do you have a sense for what's shown here, and I think what you had mentioned previously was it's kind of like a neutral color, but not a bright white color, right? Um, which I think is helpful. One of the things we've heard from like Tom Cametta and other consultants is sometimes, especially with large buildings, which with a large sort of extensive facade like this one would have. A white building, though, it seems innocuous, um, can be very bright, you know, at certain times of day. So even just something with a nor-neutral tone, I think, is, is very helpful. Trim, obviously, anything that breaks up that long facade would be helpful as well. It sounds like that's your intent.
One of the partners is an architect and he's very.
If, if, could you speak into the mic, Charlie? Just so that.
Everybody can hear, I'm sorry. Uh, one of the partners is an architect, and he's very particular about the way our buildings look. And if you go over and look at the building that we did in, on National Road for the uh, laser research and development facility, you can kind of get a picture of what we build. And this, we have a fairly high aesthetic, and we're going to try to bring that through here.
Right.
This is a big building, and we're going to try to put it behind as much uh, vegetation as possible and go from there.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't have any reason to question what you're describing, what you, your intent is. Is there a way, though, that we could be kind of simplistic and put maybe something in writing that just kind of describes maybe what it won't be? You know, won't be gl- glass, like or just something along those lines, just to put in the file?
I mean, I guess the question is there opposition to adding language to the final plan resolution? And requiring some reasonableness, you know, approval of the board?
I'm Patrick Heinz. I'm, uh, one of the managing partners for 1547 Critical Systems Realty, partners in the, uh, Green Fig Land Development Company. So as far as, um, giving a color palette, that would be a bit restrictive for our, uh, abilities to lease the buildings. But in other approvals, uh, processes that I've gone through, we've committed to, uh, some earth tones and, and basically some, broad stroke schemes where you could see where the vertical or horizontal lines were and so forth. And like where we have the sound wall, how that will all blend in, and it won't look like an albatross. Uh, we take the architecture of our building very, very seriously, and our clients, obviously. Um, you know, they're looking for, um, very, very high-end finishes as well.
I think we could, to, to the extent that the board is interested in this, and to the extent that we can work with the applicant heading into next month, I think we could come up, we, we could probably borrow language from some other ordinances and decisions and things about neutral, non-white, something to break up the facade. I think we could come up with something pretty generic if that is.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to us.
Yeah, reasonable.
No, it won't have language in there, subject to the sole discretion of the board. How's that? Okay.
Appreciate it.
And I talked Rich out of that, uh, last week.
I don't do colors, so you're safe with me.
That, that works certainly for me. And then I do have one other question of clarity is that i- in, in the application, it, the preliminary approval, I'll read, the preliminary approval resolution included conditions which account for the possibility, possibility of the grant-funded landscaping. In the event, because I know your landscaping is extensive, in the event that the grant funding doesn't come through, what would be the outcome?
I was talking to the, uh, guy that we're getting the landscaping from this week. And as soon as I get your, um, waiver of liens back and the, and the permission to spread the bio-solids, I'll share the answer with you. Actually, uh, we have to spread the bio-solids out there because we have, we have a month period to get them in. We'd like to plant the trees in the, sometime in the middle of September, or, or the third week of September. We want to get the, uh, we've got a application in, and we have a box for the water, so we, we have the irrigation in there. And what we're going to do is, we know how many, um, we know what with and without, what the number of trees is. So they're going to, they've already ordered the number of trees without, and they have them there. And, and the with, if we get the grant, they'll just send the rest of the order in, and then we'll, we'll have, we'll have all of it. So we understand that there's a, it, it's going to be a, a variant of that with less trees.
Okay. Are, are we? Are we in a position, like, a lot of the renderings shows an extensive forest, you know? I mean, it's just a great concept, and, 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 you know, I appreciate you hearing my concerns and the board's concerns on that and, and going for it. And it made a lot of sense what you did with going for the grant money. But again, in the event that, that doesn't come through, those, those trees that you would have funded with the grant will not be um, invol- there, there won't be additional trees that you'll purchase. It'll be the, the original.
It's a, that, yeah, we'll do it according to what the, uh, ordinance is. And, and we, and we'll, it, they'll be, they, they would be very adequate. I mean, we're putting a ton of trees in there. If we do it with the forest, we're reforesteding it. We're going to landscape it with, with, uh, uh, forty or so percent less trees. We're going to still, I mean, it's still, there's still a lot of trees that can go in there because the number, I think, is 460 trees or something? Yeah, it's a lot of trees, and we're going to, we're just going to go up to a, a, you know, there, there're going to be twice as many trees if we get the grant, but it'll still be nice. We'll.
So, so we're looking at 450 some odd without and close to eight, nine hundred?
If that's what it's, it, that, it's on the landscape plan, and I don't want to speak out of turn on that. And I don't want to be quoted as having promised something that I'm, that it's not.
Talking in general terms, roughly double is the difference. Thereabouts.
Thereabouts.
Alright.
The, the, actually, the, the grant is a little more than double. Okay?
Again, I just wanted a clarification. In the event that the grant did not get funded, what was going to happen?
We have an obligation there, and we're, and we're committed to it. We're going to leave the trees in there that, that should stay in there, and uh, if there's anything that's, that's damaged, I think that's the plan if we, if we, that's the plan if we don't.
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry, there, that finally loaded. A question, just kind of piggyback off what Scott was asking. Do you have a sense for when the grant awards might be announced? Usually it's a fall announcement, right?
There's a, it, the budget, I understand, is kind of a,
Oh, right.
Uh, is up in the air. And, and we're, we're reasonably competent of what we're doing because they've given us another grant on top of that, and given us permission to do something else. So we're in fairly good shape on this.
This is, just so you know, this is the, the alternative to the grant. This is what shows compliance with the zoning hearing board decision and the landscaping requirements. So it's really focused around the driveways and the areas in which they can actually plant. So it's still a very uh, heavy-duty landscaping. Um, and I think the way they've set it up in, sort of in rows, but also in two rows, still leaves some space in between if there were to be that grant award later, or if, you know, future grant funding is, is made available somehow. So I, I do think there's still a very heavy landscaping plan as well, regardless.
Okay, again, just looking for clarification.
To see what we're doing.
Got it. Alright, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have no questions. No further questions.
I'm, okay, I'll, um, lighting control. I think I just wanted to, um, maybe address that a little bit in terms of, are there conditions or is it set up so that there's a dimming control or, um, so that, um, Malvern Hunt is not?
Which is where, in the parking lot?
In the parking lot area.
With these trees, I can't imagine.
Well, they're not, they're not going to be instant forest, but, um, i- is the lighting control such that can be adjusted?
Yes, and it, we're going to try to, we're going to keep it as low as we can and do, do it according to the, again, according to the, uh, to the code. But one of the things that the, uh, police had asked us was, when we were talking about do, uh, developing the area with the pods, was they asked us to put, uh, lighting on there that would only come on when there was something going on there. Uh, motion detectors, and they like motion detectors because it, when the police are driving by, if the whole place is lit up, sometimes they can miss something, and somebody will duck behind whatever is there to hide them. But if there's a motion detector, it draws their attention to the place where there's motion. And that might be a, a, a way that we could go with, with that, is to have less, less lighting on all the time. Now, that, some of this, we're going to hope to run off of solar, and so it's not going to be just wasting energy, just burning all the time, all night. But, uh, the, the security is not dependent on the light from our side, but the police. the, the security is not dependent on the light from our side, but the police wanted it so that they could look in there and see if something's going on, alerted by the lights changing. He said that he didn't want lights on in there all the time. So.
Okay, yeah. Just kind of addressing the light pollution issue.
The access to this, once you go over the entrance road from Sweetsford, is it gate-controlled once you reach the boundary of the, okay, so nobody can just walk up to the building? Okay, good.
Those were my questions.
I have no others. I have no others.
Donna, anyone on Zoom?
No.
Anyone in the public here? None? Zach, you okay?
Yeah, provided the board makes the motion it sounds like they're going to make, we'll get working on a resolution and factor in some of these things we talked about here tonight.
Just tweak it up a little bit. All right. Okay. Good.
Great.
Make a motion?
Yep. Make a motion to authorize solicitor to draft the resolution for LD 14 2023 for the Sweetsford Road Data Center under Greenfig, the final plan resolution.
For the second.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Thank you, Charlie.
Moving on to B, item six B. Thank you. This is for land development O five 2023 for the Gray Star Apartments and the Great Valley Corporate Center. This is for consideration of a preliminary slash final plan decision. Resolution was authorized, authorized at a previous, previous month, look at me, meeting. We've since drafted that sort of building on the master plan approval, some of the conditions that were outlined therein. We've added to that and sort of reflected some of the, the changes that have occurred over the last few months. Happy to run through any of those in specific. I did email the board an updated version of that this afternoon with some tweaks specific to the sanitary sewer tapping fees and the timing related to that. We've tried to encapsulate that as best we can, given the state of the sewer sale and a couple of other items, some references to some additional plans that show the crossing of Route 29 into Valley Creek Park and an interim trail into what I'll call phase two, sort of a long Great Valley Parkway, just so that there's a connection before that, that phase moves forward. Again, happy to answer any other questions that you may have. And the applicant is here as well.
Does the trail that's going to be built on the park side going from the pedestrian walkway, does that ultimately connect to the existing trail that Atwater built?
Not quite.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
It's okay. Just, yeah.
Do you want me to just kind of walk through it real quick?
Thirty seconds.
Basic ideas to get across the road.
Right.
Bend around into where some of these existing parking spaces are and then temporarily end it at the northern end of that existing parking area. We know we have some work to do to improve accessibility and circulation in the park, but we feel like this would tee us up pretty well for the things that we need to do down the road.
Okay.
Zach, why did the three spots have to disappear?
Really just to make up the grades. The roadside embankment makes it very difficult to get across and like a, I mean, a true accessibility, like truly ADA compliant, but it's a major improvement.
You're saying the grade there is, you mean it's not flat like on the picture?
I'm sorry.
It's not flat like on the picture on the screen?
No, it's not. And there's no black and white lines anywhere that I could see.
Thank you.
Being on a state road, this will have the pen dot bumps as you.
Yeah, likely at the ramp, it would have the detectable warning surface. And to your point about pen dot, one of the, the benefits of the township of them helping us out with this piece is that they'll get it designed, permitted, et cetera, which saves us having to do that down the road. So it's, it is a benefit in that regard.
Okay, great. And money. Yeah.
I'm okay. You want to make a motion?
I have a question for Lou, just to follow up with Lou. Where do we land on the request for the three bedroom apartments? Or I should, I should be more specific, my request for the three bedroom apartments. I don't want to speak for the other members.
They, they, the client feels as though that that compromise was already made going down to the thirteen. And I just wanted to take a minute just to go back over, and I don't want to bore you with the details of this project. We've been doing this site for six years or seven years or eight years. Originally with the master plan, there were 600 apartment units with 40 of them to be three bedroom. Then the plan changed to 200 plus or minus apartment units, I think it's 250, with no restriction on two bedroom, three bedroom, one bedroom. So when this client got involved, they, knowing that this school situation was circulating in the air in East White and then other townships, they voluntarily self-restricted, number one, a third of the units have no school age children and then have 13 of with three bedrooms, which by all projections, even by the school district's projections, amounts to about five children in the school district. The, so their reasoning of it was, and it was vetted with the planning commission, it was vetted previously, they've gone to pro forma, they've gone to their loan committee, they've gone to investors. So I don't pretend to know all of those particulars and what's important, but I, for some reason, this matrix that they've ended up with is like their, their floor on the 13 three bedroom units. They would, I've gotten asked questions as to why we even agreed to that in the first place. I mean, I didn't, I didn't agree to it. The client voluntarily agreed to it. But questions are coming back to, well, the ordinance doesn't preclude it. Nobody else in the township is bound by it. We voluntarily self-restricted a third of our units against any children, thinking that we'd get a big giant checkmark on that. So that's the questions. I, I have raised, I have raised the issue. Trust me, I've raised it. I've talked to Bernadette about it. I've talked to Zach. I've talked to the client multiple times. And, you know, you could ask them to put another 20 trees in, that would go like that. You say, you know, knocked out your three bedroom units. It's like you hold the phone out like this, you know? So long-winded way of saying it hasn't been for a lack of communication, I can assure you. But I do think, and I hope that everybody would agree with me, that virtually, not virtually, every single thing that this client has been asked to do with the development of this property, they've done everything. I mean, including, I think above and beyond on improvements. Of course, I would say that. I wouldn't say we chintzed on improvements, but they really have, when the phone rings and I get asked to do something or they get asked to do something, you know, I get a very accommodating response. They're very professional. But that issue, I wanted to let you know that it wasn't brushed off at all. It was aired, brought it up. And for whatever reason, it's baked in to the pro forma, the, the financial performance of this project. So I did my, I, I did my job.
I would never argue that.
Thank you. I, I.
And to, to my, I guess you could say discredit, I did, this land development with the master plan, it's not something I was as familiar with dealing with the steps of it. So I do feel a little guilt and trying, asking for this at this stage of the game when it could have been perhaps.
But if you look back on it, I mean, if you strip away that issue, I mean, look at, I mean, when you compare, and we've been through this before, I'm sure Zach's talked to you about it before. Sometimes you lose sight of what the end goal, what the end result is here. I mean, this school district is, is going to drop $700,000 a year to the bottom line, mostly because of the age restriction on a third of the units. So it's not a financial issue at all with the school district. It can't be. And in fact, I think they would be here if it were. As you have experienced, it's the townhouse developments that are driving children into the school district. To have 400 units, which is what this ultimately will be, and to have 29 school age children over 20 of 400 units, and that's empirical. I mean, every apartment job has proven out these ratios. That's not dreamed up. That's not some national data bank. That's coming from the Great Valley School District. When the original plan was putting 79 children in the school district and this plan largely through the work of this board, where every time I come in, we downsize the development. Now we're down to 29 school age children. I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that you could ask for much more. And especially now, when you hear all this, this talk about housing and this is now the housing for first time, you know, for kids moving out of their house. I mean, this is what we're left with renting in these apartments. So yeah, will there be kids in the school district? Yeah, there'll be 29. And I bet you, five years from now, if we came back and we looked at those demos, it'd be 28, 29, 30 kids in the school district. It's, it's unbelievable how precise these projections are. And I say that only because five additional students from these 13 three bedroom units isn't going to, it's, it's not going to matter one iota in the grand scheme of the functioning, I think, of the Great Valley School District. So you've done, as a township, you've done more than any township I've been in over the past three years, four years, in accommodating with this job, this age restriction. I mean, you've gotten, I, I have not been involved in any other job, and I dare, dare say that I will be, where the client comes in and self-regulates. This is an experiment for them. You know, as they've told you, they've set up essentially two different regimes here. One for people like me, although I like living with kids. I, I wouldn't want to live in a place without kids. But they have the one complex with the kids, the one complex without the kids. And if it works here, I guess they'll emulate it elsewhere. I mean, Gray Star is national and you're sort of an incubator in East White Land for how this is going to work with this bifurcated, you know, product offering. So long-winded way, I've said too much, but it's, trust me when I tell you, it's, I take every concern that you guys give me at these meetings and I run right back up the flagpole. And as I said, everything else we were asked to do, we've done. If I'm wrong, correct me. But this one, they just, they feel like they gave it, they gave it the office four times ago or four times over.
Yeah, I'm okay with this. I just have a refining question, I guess. When there studies show, in this case, 29 school age children, does it drill down enough to actually allocate that over the ages and the grades? I don't know.
They have, Rich, they have that broken down. I don't think it's in our fiscal, but they have that, the school district has that kind of micro information. The school district has it. We didn't, we just considered one through 12. I don't think we broke it down. And the other thing, I don't think that 29 student number takes into consideration is private school. There's a strong private school network in this region, as you probably know. This assumes, I think, this assumes all 29 are heading to the public school system, which won't be the case. Usually there's four, five, six that head off to the, you know, whatever the private schools are in the area, parochial or academies, whatever. But again, I said, the proof is in the bottom line. It's just in the revenue number that jumps out at you. It's a $700,000 hit annually to the Great Valley School District. When I say hit, to the positive.
Okay. I think, I understand what Peter's concerns are. Certainly, I'd like to see it a little bit less, but I, I understand what you're saying. And I, and I know we have, we have whittled it down quite a bit on the way. And if I asked you, would you take 10, 10 units for a vote for yes tonight? Are you authorized to go that route?
I mean, I'm not, I just came from a burning ear session in the car on the way over. So no, I'm, you know, they, they bang my head against the wall. I don't have that authorization. I mean, it's, it's, it's just been run up the flagpole.
All right. I think generally, looking at the numbers of four or five, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. So Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the development application for LD O five 2023, the Gray Star Apartments at the Great Valley Corporate Center preliminary slash final plan.
Do I hear a second?
I, I am in opposition to.
All right. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we're, we're good to go.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Thanks, Peter.
Something will come up. You had to say something.
Like tossing a grenade in the room then leaving.
Yeah. Zach, you ready for C? Or do you need a minute or two?
I think, I'm not sure I'd leave this room alive if I took any longer. So this is really just, this one's actually simple. This one is just an extension. This is the proposed redevelopment of the importer barn site. There are special exception and conditional use applications. The onus is on us to schedule an opening, the hearing. They're working on a revised site plan. So they've offered an extension to delay the opening of that hearing until the end of, the extension's through the end of August. So it's possible that we get something in the meantime and would schedule for August, but seems almost as likely at this point that it would be a September hearing and we'll just stay tuned.
All right. That's the problem with that. Any questions from the public? Okay. Peter, would you like to make a motion for the extension?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to extend CU-03-2024 for 370 Lancaster Avenue for the conditional use application to the board supervised to be extended until August 31st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes.
Last one for me. This is a consideration to release the final portion of the financial security for Atwater Village, various phases. These are posted in the form of a bond. The only money really remaining on these various phases was, was for preparation of the as-built plans. Those plans have been reviewed by Arrow and found acceptable. We did notify the Homer Association's attorney, let him know that this was on the agenda for this evening. Their response was, other than the thank you for the update, was just to provide them with those as-bills, which we will do upon request. So happy to answer any questions.
I have no, I have no questions either.
I have none. Not that much.
Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the release of the financial security for Atwater Village, phases one, two N, two S to three W, three E to four E, and four W.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Donna, you have a question?
Actually, I do have a question. Did I miss something on six C two? We not do that? Did we do that?
Yeah, Peter, Peter, Peter just mentioned conditional use and.
Yep. Good catch, Donna. So we should do a similar motion for the zoning hearing board application for the special exception as well?
Let me make up for my deficiency there. I'll make a motion for the ZHB-02-2024 for 370 Lancaster Avenue for the special exception to the zoning hearing board pursuant to section 200-58, extension again until August 31st, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes again.
Good catch, Donna.
Good catch, Donna. Good catch, Donna. John Matea, if you can give us an update on the zoning and code enforcement world?
For the month of July, there are no uh, pending zoning hearing board applications to uh, to hear, so there will be no meeting of the zoning hearing board. Um, for the month, um, the township has been receiving an occasional phone call now with uh, trash service issues still up and on. Uh, we've been able to intervene uh, on behalf of the residents and get expedient follow-up service through uh, using their area management team, uh, as they still seem to struggle to uh, maintain service level levels. That, of course, would be uh, waste connections and the issues that they're having. Um, in other news, we've been uh, addressing some property maintenance issues in a couple of the neighborhoods after receiving complaints. Um, with that, we've been pretty successful in achieving some voluntary compliance by reaching out to the property owners, uh, speaking to them, letting them know what our concerns are, and then getting cooperation uh, for that. And with that, we remind the residents uh, of the township that the property maintenance code requires them uh, to maintain their properties in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I haven't driven by, did did the folks that uh, owned Friendly's, did they ever cut down those weeds?
I didn't go by those weeds, if not, I know that's a yes.
I was just curious, I, I know you were gonna reach out to them. Okay. Um, thank you for the update, John, any questions from the public? Anywhere? Board members?
None.
How's our island doing and the vegetation at the corner of twenty-nine and thirty in this crazy heat? Turning nice and brown?
Have we been watering? Uh, we need to water.
Just curious, okay, yeah.
That investment's gonna go out the window if we don't put some water on that.
Brown's not a bad color, okay.
Brown's an expensive color, please uh, water.
We did have a one-year warranty on those, didn't we? Has it been that long? Time flies when you're having fun.
We're, we're going well past drought-resistant limits of plants.
Yeah, I would think. I know I did uh, have a meeting with Zach and our uh, plant consultants, and I asked them to kinda kinda look at maybe any other options that could be uh, to brighten that up, but that was about a month ago, so I don't know if anything came of that or not.
Water would brighten, water would brighten it up.
What's that?
Water would brighten it up. Very simple. Rain.
But John, we do have a water truck, don't we? All right, we'll see how the rain does. It might come knocking on John's door for two hundred gallons of water. Good question, Peter, good question. Um, so moving on to uh, item eight, public comment, are there any? There are none?
There are none.
Seeing none? We'll move on to consent agenda. Gentlemen, do you notice what time it is?
Yeah, pretty good, I'm in good shape.
Um, I will read the consent agenda, stop me with any questions as usual. And um, leading off is to approve the meeting minutes from June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Accept Tara Frey's proposal to perform environmental due diligence for the Springdale Balderson Properties not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars. Accept Michael Baker proposal for final engineering design for the Sydney Mill Trail Extension not to exceed twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six.
Can I stop you there?
Two hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six.
Can I stop you there?
Yes, you can.
And I wanted to ask Catherine, uh, where we are with that project, and I guess Zach.
Yep, um, so this is good news to see the final design on here, the preliminary design is just wrapping up now, so this is phase two of the project, which will get us to construction after this is done, so this um, is a big number, but I'll just wanna remind the board too that um, a good portion of this is included in a GTRP app um, grant that the township was awarded, so that included preliminary and final engineering cost, so half of this is reimbursed by, through that program.
So this cost is in addition to the in
To the preliminary design cost.
Which was around one hundred K, was it?
Roughly, yes, yeah, I can get you the specific number.
That's, that's fine, you don't need to do that, but so we're looking at four hundred plus K just for the engineered design?
I, it does say engineering design, but it includes like about twenty-five different tasks, so things related to all of our permitting, there's structural engineering that goes into this, um, it's very extensive what goes into it, so it's not just preparing plans. Um, there's a lot of other coordination work that's going into this.
To be almost shovel-ready?
To be out to bid.
Out to bid, bye?
Um, we hope the project will be complete in twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Twenty twenty-six, what? It's twenty twenty-four.
Um, it's a, yeah.
July.
Yes.
It's a going-away present for Rich. Catherine, just
Breaking ground.
Just, just to, Catherine, just a reminder, if you can send me over that plan, cause I had wanted to see a couple tweaks, I just wanna make sure they're in there.
I did request it, yes, I'll send it over to you.
So. Um, in the event those tweaks are in there, it's not gonna impact this, so I'll just wait for that. Um, moving on to D, accept Tyler Technologies' proposal for the cash management module for existing enterprise ERP software in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. E, ratify personal action for employee number one nine two. And finally, appoint the Brinker Simpson as acting financial director. Donna, any comments from Zoom? Not? As there's no one here in the building, I will uh, ask for a second for the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-five.